Good evening, everyone. I say good evening because it's winter in Idaho and it's dark already, but good afternoon. This is the Moscow City Council Public Works Finance Committee meeting on Monday, December the 8th of 2014. And the first order of business is to introduce Dan Crossgallum, on my right, council member, Art Bedke, council member on my left, city supervisor Gary Redner. The approval of the November 24 minutes, please.
I'm okay with approving them with the addition that was made regarding the totes sizes where you said you'd support different sizes but still think the 35 gallon is too small to be useful.
Okay.
And that works for me, too.
Okay, we'll consider them approved. Stephanie, thank you. The next item is the disbursement report from November 2014, and the Honorable Don Palmer will present.
He came in out of the wire.
He made it.
Yeah, it's been running here twice. That's good for me. I'm here to submit the November financial disbursements report and treasures report. The expenditures for the month of November totaled $1,588,010.15. Payroll was $896,654 of that. Sanitation was $257,902. Construction was $105,697. Of that number, there are several projects I'd like to outline for you to kind of give you some insight as what that is. We did sidewalk improvements, lift station, and some sewer improvements. And then the Phase 1 underpass study is within the professional services line item, as is the JUB wastewater treatment plant, temperature evaluation and strategic planning. So the rest of the other projects or categories are utilities, $79,036; supplies, $39,856; professional services, $39,539, of which I mentioned some of the services; grants, $22,633; equipment, $16,933, which includes, finance had to get a new copier. It was on its last legs.
Helps you how much?
That's not all of it. There's three things in there. Yeah, it was about $11,000 of it, though, and a defibrillator for the fire department and there was a third thing, I don't remember.
If you don't catch your breath, Don, you're going to need a defibrillator.
I know. And then the last item is insurance, $6,732. And what that is, is the workers' comp annual through December for the fire department. We had to make a payment, and so Gary can fill you in on that a little bit, but with regard to workers' comp, some of that is related, about $4,700 bucks. Hopefully, we'll get a reimbursement from the volunteer fire department.
That's through 15?
That's just through 14.
Oh, okay.
15 is...
Calendar 14?
Calendar 14.
Okay.
So, yeah, there were some issues with regards to that, I think Dan knows about. So anyway, hopefully, we'll get reimbursement on that. And that total for those subcategories represent 92% of the expenses of the 1.5. Those categories total $1,464,982. Any questions?
Nope, I guess we signed it, so I guess we approve it.
It would appear.
Thank you for letting me catch my breath.
Gary, something that Don said jogged my memory. He mentioned JUB and the sewer treatment plant. Could we get a report possibly next meeting on the pilot plant that they...
Pilot program?
Yeah, this is nowhere in your paperwork, but we were running a pilot plant for temperature out there, and I don't remember that we've heard a recent status and how it went. I understand there were some questions, if not, I don't know if there were problems, but if you would get us a report on that and any subsequent work in that vein, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, will do.
Thank you. Don, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number three, Mike Ray to present a proposed lot division of 1027 Alturis Drive. And this will be a public meeting in case anyone here wishes to talk about it, and I will invite comment when Mike gets through presenting.
Thank you, gentlemen. So before you today, we have a lot division request at 1027 Alturis Drive to accommodate another twin home out there on Alturis. Just to familiarize yourself, outlined in red in the center of your screens, the subject property at 1027. You have Blaine Street running north-south here, as well as Alturis Drive, properties within Indian Hills 6th addition to the city of Moscow. Looking at the zoning configuration of the area, part of a kind of a smaller swath of the R4, which is multifamily residential. You have an R4 or an RO zone that has townhouses basically included on that property to the north. You also have Alturis Technology Park to the northeast, Motor Business Zone, which is the old Tidyman's, currently NRS warehouse, as well as the LDS Church there to the northwest. It's in cupus with Farm Ranch. Also within Indian Hills 6, you have a mixture of R2 and R3, which is moderate medium density residential. Closer view of the subject property, currently 5,420 square feet in size, located in the center of the block there. The proposed lot division would essentially divide that in half, similar to the other twin homes you see to the west, as well to the north side of the block here, resulting in the westerly parcel being 2,704 square feet in size, easterly 2,716 square feet in size, and the width on both of those is going to be 29.5. So that meets really all of our requirements for the R4 zone. The minimum lot width's 25, lot area's 2250, and these are all for twin home parcels located within that zone. Obviously, it'll meet all setback requirements when building permits pulled for the property. Per our city Moscow requirements, all the property owners within 600 feet have been noticed, as well as a site posted seven days in advance. Staff's recommendation is take public comment if applicable and recommend approval of the lot division request with no conditions suggested. I'd certainly be able to answer any questions you might have.
No questions, but Dan does.
The one to the, just to the west of it, we haven't divided it yet, or they haven't?
I actually, I look back on that. It's actually been approved for division. They just haven't gone up and recorded it at the county yet. So that's why, yeah, that's why it hasn't shown up on our plat maps yet.
And the other three haven't been, nothing approached them yet to the east?
I believe that this lot's currently being developed. I believe that these three lots are currently vacant, so nothing proposed on those yet, but anticipate that it move right on down the block.
Mike, this is not the most efficient way to do this, one at a time. Is this just a product of the builder acquiring a lot at a time and then constructing on it and asking for the division?
Correct, yeah.
It's not the developer saying, "I want to switch all these lots and cut them in half."
Yeah, the builder has a partner that he works with, partner purchases the property, and then he builds the twin home on it. And typically, they go one at a time, and so that's the reason they don't buy up the whole block. They would just go one spec house at a time, and then once they have that sold, then they move on to the next one. It's typically the way it's been occurring.
And then in the CCNR, it says a twin home that is being built. Is it under construction?
I believe that they, I believe there's a foundation in on the property, correct.
What happens if we don't agree to do this?
Basically, they'd be restricted to a duplex, which is allowed within the zone as well. So they'd be running a slight risk, but meets all the minimum lot size, lot width requirements, so really the reason for denial would, I couldn't see.
And they've been allowed, if my, they've been allowed to put a foundation in with the usual agreement?
Yeah, I mean, they'd be allowed to proceed at their own risk, basically, should the lot division not be approved, but they'd still be eligible for a duplex. It just has to condo the ownership. They'd have to find another way of dividing that.
As an accommodation to builders because of this time...
We've done so many of these, and they're so rubber stamped, I thought I'd throw a rock in the pond and make a ripple or two.
Yeah, and just to revisit the policy, it is to allow some flexibility because of our, when we get freezing weather, it's tough to put a foundation in. That's really the big thing people want to get in so they can go up with it from there. So they sign something that says that they're doing it at their own risk, not predicting what the council's going to do, so it's usually allowed.
Okay, anyone in the audience that has any opinion or input on this? Seeing none? Anything else?
I'm all, I'm okay with it. I don't see anything different than...
What we've done.
We said what we've done so far. You know, it'd be nice if we could do them all in one fell swoop, but they've got their program that they're following, so we'll, I guess, keep seeing them as we see them.
Yeah, it fits the development pattern that's going on in that neighborhood, and there certainly seems to be a market for twin homes to the exclusion of happy duplex or something. And so to me, it makes good sense for that area. Rock on.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Mr. Bellnapp, Bill Bellnapp's coming forward to talk about item number four, which is what I like to call West A Street, to keep me from getting confused with East A Street, which is Farm Road to Hatley Edition, a master plan project professional services agreement.
Good afternoon. So the area in question that we're discussing this evening, is that section of A Street located between the western terminus near Warbona Drive and between that and the Farm Road intersection just north? So it's largely the property that's located north of the current Palouse Mall location. It's been an area of interest to the city and to both the city and the university for a number of years, and the university currently has parts of the North Farm operation and the dairy operation in this area. It has been a location the city had identified as potential future retail commercial development in close proximity to the existing Palouse Mall and positioned on the west, you know, I guess where it's located closer to the Pullman Marketplace, as well as the Pullman Marketplace. The city and the university entered into a conversation over the course of the last several months to look at developing a future concept master plan for the development of that property, and both parties agreed to jointly fund the effort. It was included in the current FY 2015 fiscal year budget for the city's $25,000, half of the project, with an estimated cost of $50,000 for the total effort. The proposed, the city developed and advertised in RFP. I think we received seven responses to the requests for proposals, and they had a selection committee that was comprised of both city and university representatives that reviewed the submissions that were received, and ultimately recommended selection of Welch Comer and Bernardo Wills as the successful consultant team to work on the project. A scope of work has been developed, and overall, the scope includes an overall kind of market feasibility, site analysis, site suitability, and retail market analysis component, a zoning and land use analysis in review, a conceptual plan, retail lot layout and mass grading plan on the project, and then a roadway design and utility assessment component. There are, the scope of services includes a development of several alternate schematic layouts for review and direction and solicitation, and at the end of the project, we'll have a overall view for the future development of that corridor, a horizontal, vertical roadway alignment, a recommended lotting and layout plan, as well as utility and design and overall cost of construction for that, for the overall corridor. That'll give us a good deal of information, both to look at the kinds and nature of uses that we can accommodate in a corridor, as well as the anticipated future development costs. And there's been discussion of potentially applying for a future tiger grant to connect the A Street corridor to allow for better transit circulation and routing. Currently, we're going up on Warbona and turning around, having come back and backtrack on the highway, so there may be other funding sources we could pursue to promote the development of the roadway corridor. The overall project for the budget was $50,000, as I mentioned. The initial estimates on the scope of work were slightly over that amount. We have since worked with the respondents to revise the scope of work of the project as it related to the market feasibility assessment component. We recently were completed a market assessment for the legacy crossing area that includes a lot of the retail market assessment information that we originally anticipated that we would need for this project, so they were able to utilize that and reduce the cost on the feasibility phase from the $13,720 down to $10,140, and that brings the overall project cost down to $49,725, which is within the available budget for the project. So with that, staff would recommend selection, selection of the Bernardo Wills and Welch Comer and approval of the professional services agreement, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
I don't have any. No questions, but I think proceeding to look at the A Street connector is really important for the future of the town, especially out on the west side, and get that linked up. I think it's a good step forward. Got to work with good data, so here's a chance to get some.
Bill, in the packet, we've got an aerial map of what's called the project study area...
Correct.
...which was in the RFP, looking for the engineer for this, for this work.
Correct.
Will the deliverable that we get from this encompass that entire area?
That's correct. The northern boundary might fall in a little bit of flux. That was a boundary that we drew when we were developing the RFP, not knowing exactly where that roadway alignment was going to sit and where a reasonably sized lot to accommodate the anticipated users would sit on that north edge. So I'd expect that that north boundary could flex a little bit, depending upon the ultimate layout. The other boundaries and extents will remain consistent.
And this delineated area is, has apparently been agreed to by the university as developable?
Correct.
Okay. Nothing else?
Been looking for a new place for a dairy.
Go right on forward.
Well, if the dairy leaves, it'll narrow down the choices when we have a cold January day and, you know, Roman gets mauled, or not, as the case may be. Okay.
Let's move it forward.
Consent?
Works.
Works?
All right, thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, Mr. Redner and Attorney Rod, City Attorney Rod Hall are going to carry the water on the Southeast Moscow Water and Sewer District Services Agreement Extension. This will be the third or fourth of these, I forget.
Oh, and I'm not sure we're, I'm not sure that we're ready yet. I see Lois Pritchett is here, the president of the Southeast Moscow Sewer District. She could join us.
Ms. Pritchett, would you mind coming up?
Thank you, ma'am.
We wanted to do, and you're exactly right, this is one of several times that we've been here in the past. It used to be so simple when our sewer districts just re-upped their agreements every year, but starting with that pesky North Polk Sewer District and dissolving, and the city expanding and annexing that property, one of our two sewer districts, water sewer districts, left, and the Southeast Moscow Sewer District continued. And we have been working with them for many years. The city of Moscow, as you know, provides the maintenance and service, the municipal sewer services to the Southeast Moscow Water and Sewer District. And only over the past, I guess it's been about three or four years ago, there was a discussion about whether or not the city wanted to take over the district and in fact, so the district wouldn't have to remain in effect and keep providing the services out there. When that was discussed the first time, essentially, the council indicated they did not want to proceed, I believe on the advice of staff, because at that point, the idea was, or at least the proposal was, that the residents of the district should at least not oppose annexation, if not be outright annexed, if they're going to be provided municipal services. So there was a new agreement that was put into place. That agreement was close to expiring. The discussion came back up. We were preparing just to enter into a new agreement when there was a question from the council as to whether we wanted to revisit the issue of, did it make sense to continue the Southeast Moscow Water and Sewer District if, in fact, the city would be willing to continue to provide the services that we provide now? So that is why we are back here today. We've discussed that with Ms. Pritchett, who's discussed it with her board. They seem willing to want to further the discussion, but of course, they have to wait until the city decides whether or not they're willing to do anything about it. There's a memo in the packet from Rod, which indicates the steps that a district needs to take in order to dissolve. They're not of a lot of relevance to us as a city, except that does cause some issues for the district. Of course, if they don't have any opposition from their members, they can do so by resolution according to the code. If they are challenged by their membership, then they need to put it to a vote of the district members. Of course, they don't want to proceed with that until they decide, until the council gives them some indication of whether they want to proceed. So that's what we're here today, and I'm sorry that Les McDonald is not here to discuss with you. We've had several meetings about that, and by the way, I did forward Rod's opinion to Lois so that she could share it with her board, so they know what needs to be considered at this time. So we go back to the, we wanted to bring up some issues for you. The first is the annexation issue, of course, and that is that, as you noticed from Rod's memo, if a entity is receiving municipal services outside of the city limits, by code, they impliedly consent to being annexed if that becomes necessary. Of course, there are new annexation laws in effect. The legislature changed those within the past five years, and there are certain things that you have to do in order to annex properties at this point. Since these properties would be provided, at least one municipal service outside of the city, it becomes more difficult for the city to annex properties without the permission of the property owner. As you recall that, and Rod can correct me, but that process involves, are they receiving city services? What would they be getting if they were annexed? And if it isn't a benefit, quote unquote, and I'm paraphrasing quite a bit here, then it's tougher and tougher to annex the properties. So if you get this situation, if you have properties in the Southeast Moscow Sewer District that in fact are receiving sewer service already, they're receiving their road service from North Lata Highway District, they have private wells, and they're receiving garbage service from Lata County, Lata Sanitation, Inc. So as I, as you can tell, you're getting farther and farther away to providing a benefit by annexing folks, so that's a consideration.
Okay, back up a little bit. So by accepting the city run in the sewer system right now, there's implied consent, but that's not enough to annex because we aren't, since we're already given it, there's no extra benefit that they're going to get if they become annexed.
Yeah, unless Rod's aware of some new cases that I'm not, with the new legislation, I don't know that it's ever been exercised under a...
So it kind of, the newer legislation kind of shoves the implied consent aside a little bit.
I would say, go ahead.
Well, yeah, now it requires the consent of the person before they sign on to the service. I think that changed in 2008.
Yeah, okay.
But I would say that, in all honesty, they're already receiving the service at this point. So unless the district and the city get rid of the contract and we're no longer providing that service, I don't think that it will make a heck of a lot of difference in receiving the service anyway. But the cleanest way to do it is to require annexation, which is something we had talked about several years ago. District didn't want to do it, and it went away. That, in my understanding, is that the council is interested in proceeding in spite of the fact that annexation would not occur at this time, or at least you want to consider it.
I, well, the council will have to speak to this, but what, I have not heard anything from any council members indicating that, sure, let's do it with the district and annex the properties out there. In fact, probably the opposite. We really don't want it, but since we're doing everything to run that sewer system now and have for 20-plus years...
Longer than that.
Longer, a lot longer.
Longer, okay.
Since the same week.
In other words, we receive their discharge into our system, we maintain the system. If there's a clog or whatever, we go out there and work on it, per the agreement. We bill for sewer services by half the district. You know, we're doing it all now, and the idea or the concept of having the district dissolve, we don't take on anything more than what we're already doing, is my understanding.
Yeah, and it's been since 1974. The, no, from a practical standpoint, you're exactly right, but the issue is now...
Just keep on keeping on.
You do not own the system now.
Correct.
So...
Understood.
Your obligations are the obligations that you've undertaken pursuant to contract.
Correct.
So there is another party to that contract. You would be removing the middleman, so to speak. Now, on one hand, you're getting the assets that the district has, but on the other hand, you are now stepping into the shoes of the district and providing that sewer service firsthand.
Basically, individual contracts rather than with a representative entity?
Well, essentially, the same contract that you have impliedly with the people within the city limits that you're providing sewer service to. So we would treat them as a municipal customer, although they don't reside within our political jurisdiction, which seems like a fine point, but it does raise issues, which we'll get into here in a moment, if you want me to continue.
Continue.
Okay. One of the things that has become, Don Palmer brought up, which makes a lot of sense, not just because it came from Don, but it does make a lot of sense...
In spite of it coming from Don.
In spite of it coming from Don.
Thanks, Gary.
In the city, we provide water and sewer service in an omnibus bill. So if someone does not pay their city utility bill, then typically, we are allowed to cut water off, cut water service. So if it's a, and it's an omnibus bill, so you pay the bill, you don't get to say, "I'm paying my sewer bill, I'm not paying my water bill, I am paying my garbage bill." So what happens is if they don't pay their bill after a certain amount of time, according to processes in the finance department, they will give notice a couple of times that your water's going to be due to cut off unless you pay your bill. Once that gets close, or they're actually cut off, I think you'll find that they typically come in and pay their bill. When you are not providing water service and sewer, and only providing sewer service alone, you don't have that same leverage, so to speak. So at that point, we looked at whether we could plug the line, essentially rendering...
Put a cork in it.
Exactly. And there are, there are tools that you can use to do that, and some of them apparently used to require quite a bit of work, but now my understanding is there's some that are fairly easy to use. We've not coordinated that with the health district, because once you, a building or a residence does not have sewer service, it becomes per se uninhabitable, and folks need to vacate. So that would have to be coordinated with the health department. So that is one thing, if that is in fact, and Rod's indicated that the code allows that to happen, so the biggest question is how we would run that through the health district. So that takes care of that.
And you're going to find that out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's, well, and that's part of the, just like the district, we need to get some feedback before we continue to...
I think the question of what the health department will and won't allow is more pertinent than, I mean, I think the council needs to know that.
Yeah, absolutely.
If the health department says, "We don't care what the law allows, we're not going to let you put a cork in a unpaid service out there," then I think we need to know that before we...
And you will.
...go to making a decision, do we wish to request the district to dissolve if they want to?
The next step is, and it also involves the district, or the health district, and that is, you now have an established district boundary out there, and anybody who resides within the district boundary paid something through bonds to build the district infrastructure. So if they wish to hook up, they would pay the hookup fees. They'd run the private sewer line to their, wherever they wanted it, and they'd be able to use it and pay the fee, which is our current city rates plus a dollar.
Two.
Two dollars.
Two dollars.
Okay. So they would be allowed to hook up by right.
That's a dollar.
I think it is a dollar.
Well...
Whatever, it's not that much.
It was proposed to go up, but I don't think it has yet.
Yeah, I checked it out. It did.
It did go up.
It did go up? Okay, it is $2.
But, yeah.
Okay. So the question is then, if the district boundaries go away, and they are just merely boundaries at that point, would everyone residing within the current boundaries of the district, whether they're subdividing, splitting, plating, whatever, would they be allowed to hook up at whatever charge was at the time to the sewer service that exists out there? That's one issue. And our anticipation is that they would be allowed to.
And kind of a, why not?
The second piece of it is, is could they be compelled to hook up? And again, this is...
Health district first.
Precisely.
Or do EQ?
It's health district. It's health district. At that point, the reason the sewer district is out there is because their private wells were being contaminated by septic systems. So our anticipation is that they would be compelled to hook up. Initial conversations with the health district indicate that that's likely what they would do, but again, we're waiting for something definitive from them, because it doesn't make sense to have a pipe out there and everything else, and then still have people putting in septic systems. What do you charge for it? Right now, as indicated, folks are being charged within the district at city rates plus $2 per month. So does that stay the same? Do they get charged anything for being outside of the city? Or, and our current policy is if you reside outside the city and you receive city water sewer services, you pay double rates. That's not the case with the sewer district, was not the case with North Polk either. Our anticipation is that the council would want us to charge a fee similar to what they're being charged now and not double the rate. So we're looking for a little guidance on that.
How many double rate customers are there right now? Some on, is it on North Mountain View or something like that? There's a few?
Yeah.
I think it was less than a half a dozen.
So that's something, but again, our anticipation as staff was that you'd want to continue something in the same realm. After discussion with Les, and I think Walter hit on this before, actually, operations of the system will change very little. We already maintain the system. There is the capital piece of it that is, under the contract, is still the district's. This district still has bonding capacity and bonding authority, so should it go down for some reason, something catastrophic, and by that, I'm talking about the lift station, that's the main thing they've got out there. So that's the district's responsibility. In reality, the district would need some time to react to that. I doubt they have half a million dollars laying around in their purse, so chances are the city would likely have to.
And it would end up doing it anyway.
Quite likely, which has its own legal ramifications, but it has not occurred, and the maintenance has been kept up. But it's still something else. We would be undertaking that as a obligation, and of course, there are fees that are paid in that to help us offset that cost as well. Last thing, and this is one that is more, has to do with agreements, and again, the extraterritorial, extrajurisdictional nature of the district, and that is, in the city, if we need to dig up a sewer lines in the middle of our streets, they get up, they give folks notice, they dig it up, they fix it. Now, of course, we'd be dealing with another governmental entity, the North Lata Highway District, North, or the Southeast Moscow Sewer District just got done negotiating a new deal or a continuation of the deal.
We're not done, but.
Yeah, but close. And we have no reason to believe that the relationship with North Lata Highway District would be anything less than that. But there are easements that no doubt have been executed in favor of the sewer district that we'd have to transfer, at least see if we will take advantage of them as successors in interest. So there's a bunch of work to be done here. So I guess what we're looking for is some idea from the council with all of these issues, and we're happy to put those in a memo form. If you'd like it that way, we can answer the question from the health district.
I think we, we have to have the, I think you mentioned two health district questions. One, you don't have any idea what they will say, and one, you have a hint.
Yes.
And I think we need those, otherwise, we're just kind of swinging in the wind till we have them.
Okay. There are two, and I asked Les, and I don't, I didn't see it in the packet, but I asked Les for an assessment of the value of the district assets. So I don't know if we've seen that before or not, Rod. Do you remember if we saw that? So we ought to have that information as well.
I would, you're talking about their physical assets?
Yes.
I'd be more interested in their bank account.
Well, we can certainly find that out.
Except our treasurer probably can tell you right now.
No, I mean, but at the appropriate time, I think a discussion will have to be held about what to do about that bank account, whether it moves over to the city or whether they do something with it. And I don't have, I don't have any thought one way or the other, but the value of the lines and the lift station, et cetera, I think is of interest to Mr. Palmer because of his accounting for assets for the city, but I'm not sure that it's pertinent really to the council, whether it's a million or 20 million.
Well, those assets now are 40 years old. They've been in the ground 40 years, so an assessment and that sort of thing, we can get that. I don't know, and you're right, the amount of assets of the district as far as cash may make a difference.
May be reason for discussion.
And with the North Polk Sewer District, it had the same discussion. Rod indicated to me, and one thing I forgot to mention was, the, as you know, Walter, where you used to live up there was within the district. Now, there are some city annexations going on east that will utilize the.
District lines.
The district lines to transmit sewage back into the city. And the agreement, the draft agreement that is in the packet will continue the current agreement that we have. We've talked about, when Lois and I had discussions about the agreement several months ago, Les indicated that he would like that to be part of the new agreement as well. So just wanted to make sure that if the city owned that asset, owned the lines, then that discussion would go away.
Right, because we've, with Ridgeview 1, you've got 20 to two dozen properties going through city lines down to the highway, then going through district lines to come back around across the highway on Mountain View to get to the city system. The Ridgeview 2 subdivision would add another 60-odd lots, if I remember.
Are you talking about Thompson's?
Yes.
Yes.
That's 44.
44, thank you, ma'am. Forty-four, add another 44 lots to that equation where city properties are utilizing the district lines to get the sewage back around. And that's only going to continue as time goes on.
Well, and that's, that's true. I guess from.
And that may, that may be what has brought this back up.
Yeah.
Is that as we see the city starting to expand based upon property owners' desires to be annexed.
Well, I think the district rightfully has some questions about if we're going to be routing city sewage through these lines. Is there some further consideration? And that frankly, in my mind, is the most compelling discussion or argument to take over the assets. As a matter of policy, I will advise you once again that it's not my recommendation that you undertake providing city services outside of the city limits without an agreement. Right now, the, with all due respect to the district, the district is a governmental entity. We're providing services to a governmental entity. Once we take over those assets and the district is dissolved, we will be providing those services directly to consumers, which is a totally different issue. The other thing is, is cities do not survive solely on rates, as I've preached in the past. The rates for sewer, the rates for water, the rates for garbage are all fine, and they end up paying for the cost of the service as well as some administrative fee. However, our main source of non-rate income is property taxes, even though it's about, you know, a little over a third of our general fund. If those properties are provided municipal services and they are not annexed into the city, they are not generating property taxes. If they're not generating property taxes, then the other services that the city provides, such as our roads, such as our parks, all the other things that a city provides are not being compensated. Now, it's a different issue, but that's one of the ways that you have orderly expansion of city limits is through annexation. And typically, you don't provide services outside without a governmental agreement. So, that being said, is this a bad idea? I'm not saying that, and there are things that are happening. Just want to make sure the council is fully advised that, again, as your city limits continue to move to the east, Ridgeview 2nd is a good example, that you could end up with a very large island of county land surrounded by the city and receiving sewer services. So, that being said.
Which we have had in the past, not large, but small pockets of.
Exactly.
Non-city properties that were receiving not only sewer, but water and other services.
And about 12 years ago, the city council passed a policy by which county islands.
Take those in.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So just trying not to relive history. Again, I think there are enough issues here that this makes it a different breed of cat and should be considered separately. As I said, Les is out of the office, probably through the end of this week, if not next week. We can work to have a full white paper for you with all of your questions answered. My anticipation would be, you probably don't want to do that the first meeting in January. We could do it the second meeting in January, make that the main thrust of that meeting. In the meantime, we do need.
Meaning this committee?
Well, come to the committee earlier. I'm talking about having it ready to go to council.
Second council meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
So for now, we're basically, let's extend services through the end of January, or?
Extend the services through July, through.
This is July 31.
We already have it through the end of January, but that's cutting it way too.
Which when I walked in here, I thought, why do you need that long? And after your list, I'm wondering if it's too short.
Well, we want to, like the district, like the council, you want to keep enough pressure on that we're moving forward. And I think that's what happened in this case. We thought that another four or five months was going to be enough till we started actually looking at the legal ramifications, so.
Well, you also have an election timing issue.
Yes.
Should members of the district wish to force an election.
May.
You're, you're looking at a May election, so July makes sense, I think.
Yeah, we should be in plenty of time to, if we can get that, again, and all we're looking to do is to frame the issues for.
You have to advertise 30 or 60 days prior, I forget.
I've talked to somebody who knows more about elections than I do.
That's, that's okay. I think we're fine, but it's, it's not just trying to hit, hit the first Tuesday in May.
Sure. Well, and it's a, it's a progressive thing. The district will have to put notice out, and then we'll have a resolution of dissolution.
So the district's waiting. The district's waiting on us.
Yes.
Is that correct, Ms. Pritchett? That y'all have interest in seeing this happen? You want to know, do we want it to happen?
Right.
Okay.
Because it takes a lot of steps once it starts.
Yes.
Steps we didn't, sure we were aware of.
Anything other comments you'd like to make, any?
I think the biggest concern was, once Thompson developed his, and it keeps developing out there, that's putting more and more of the city. And then we talk about if the lift station goes down, actually, the people in this, that's in our district in the city are going to get hit with our bond too, because they're going to, and they're not going to be too happy with that, I'll guarantee you that, because I've already dealt with some in the first edition that aren't totally happy because they're on our district, but they're in the city, and so there's all kinds of problems. But it's some ways we need to go, so we definitely know the guidelines and where we're going with this.
All right. So I like the idea of seeing it go forward with the new contract, as long as the pressure stays on to actually move forward and answer all of these questions.
Contract extension. It's not a new contract.
Yes. So getting that in place to buy us some time, but definitely keep those to the grindstone so we can get these questions answered and explore all the possibilities.
If the council desire, committee desires, we could take it to council. I don't know if you want to have it regular consent, if it's just the extension of the contract, probably be consent.
I think consent on the extension.
And then that will give Lois a chance to go back to her board and get it signed before the expiration of the contract.
I do have one thing. Instead of the July 31 date, I wonder if we need the end of August because of finances that we turn in?
I was just wondering about that, too, with the one culprit.
We'd be happy to make it the end. We'd be happy to make it the end of August.
Yeah, I don't think that's, one month's not going to be a problem.
Financial filing.
Oh, okay. That'd be fine.
Because I have to meet a taxing thing by August 10th, I think it is. So we need that extension if we have to.
Okay, we'll go ahead and change that to the end of August.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
You know, if I may.
Appreciate you being here.
If I may, why don't we just make it September 30th? That's the end of both of our fiscal years, and it'll coincide very nicely with our budget. And if it gets done before that, fine, it just supplants the contract, or supersedes the contract.
Yeah, but that allows what we have to do.
By the way, did you see the, speaking of sewer districts and things, to find a Facebook video of Moscow Public Works fishing the giant root ball out of the sewer pipe? I suggest you have a look.
I managed to miss that.
I think you should have a look.
Pretty impressive, actually.
Yeah, it is.
Nothing further, sir.
Okay. I believe that completes our agenda.
Consider a motion.
Yep.
Thank you.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.